Good evening and welcome to our school committee meeting of Tuesday, January 25th. We are coming out of an executive session and entering this regular meeting, so we've already called our meeting to order. And we will start with the pledge of allegiance. We're gonna put the flag up, Brian. Yep, there we go. Oh, that's not the flag. We'll start. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, um, as we do every meeting, I'll start with reading the mission statement. The vision of the Wakefield Public Schools is to graduate students who are confident, lifelong learners, who are respectful and caring members of their community. Our mission is to prepare students for college, career, and community by providing rich and challenging curriculum, high-quality instruction, and educational experiences that meet their individual needs and interests. Next, we've got public comment. I did not get any emails from anyone planning to speak, but did anybody want to speak? Okay, looks like we have no public comment. So I'm going to move on to the Student Advisory Council. Maggie, I see you're here.
Hi, um, so it's just me joining today. Sorry, I just got a message. But um, so it's just me joining today just because Molly wasn't coming because we don't have any updates, actually. It's been a super chill time period in the school year. We just, we didn't have midterms last week. It's been crazy. So we just thought we'd hop on, say everything's going, seems to be going well. And yeah.
That's okay. Super chill is good, Maggie. We'll take super chill.
It is better than super crazy, so.
Okay, good. Well, thanks for joining us.
Thank you.
Okay, consent agenda. Tom, Mr. Markham? Am I not seeing Mr. Markham? I think we lost Mr. Markham. Does anybody?
You might have lost him. Do you want me to make the motion?
Um, Kevin, that would be wonderful if you don't mind.
Yeah, sure. I'm not gonna make it bigger here. Okay, we've had the school committee approve the minutes of the school committee meeting of January 11th, 2022, and the minutes of the school committee professional development workshop of December 9th, 2021, and accept the minutes of the school committee student services subcommittee meeting of January 5th, 2022, and the minutes of the school committee finance and facilities subcommittee meeting of January 6th, 2022.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made, seconded, discussion. Seeing none, Judy, can we do a roll call vote, please? And Tom is back? Or I don't know if you ever left, Tom, but we couldn't see you.
Yeah, I don't know what happened, yeah.
Ms. Veer?
Yes.
Mr. Markham?
Yes.
Ms. Lehman?
Yes.
Mr. Ingalls?
Yes.
Mr. Piscado?
Yes.
Ms. Wall?
Yes.
Okay, um, so I, my comments are up next. First, I just, I wanted to mention because there's been a little bit of confusion around when our next meeting is. Back in June, we, we approved a slightly different calendar for February, March, and April, taking into consideration vacation weeks and trying to kind of work around the election. And so we had made some changes to the, to the calendar, and we were only scheduled to have one meeting in February. We've actually decided to meet on both February 8th and February 15th. If we were to stick to the second and, and fourth Tuesdays of the month, that fourth Tuesday would put us in vacation week. So we're going to go ahead and meet on the 8th. We're going to meet on the 15th. And currently today, we are slated to schedule, to meet three times in March, March 1st, 15th, and 29th. We are going to have some discussion about that at the finance and facilities meeting on Thursday to make sure that we have all of the timelines kind of lined up for all of the things that we need to do related to our budget. So I'd like to request that we come back to the committee at our next meeting and report back on the recommendation of how we handle March. There was some feedback that a committee member, Wall, gave at our last finance and facilities meeting where she was a little bit concerned about straying from our typical second and fourth Tuesday of the month because the, the community kind of expects that. There was kind of some reasoning around why we had changed that. So I do want to go back and revisit that particularly to make sure that we have the coverage that we need in March and April to get all the things budget-related kind of handled. So for now, February, we're going to meet the 8th and the 15th, which is the second and third Tuesday. We won't meet during vacation week, and we will come back to the committee and kind of report back on our recommendation on how to handle March, which will probably also include April because we've got April vacation to kind of contend with and the desire to not have a school committee meeting the week of the election, which would be the last week of April. Does that all make sense to committee members? Okay. Um, also on the agenda was appointing Mike Boudreau to the, as the school committee liaison to CPAC, but Mike is not here. And so it feels a little silly for me, for me to do that motion without Mike here. So we're going to postpone that motion and wait till he is present at our meeting and go ahead and, and take care of that. The only other thing I wanted to cover was some, some folks may remember some, the public comment that came from Erin Creos, the president of the Wakefield Educators Association at the beginning of our meeting last, last meeting, where she had made some comments about the lack of follow-up from the school committee regarding some comments that she made on, or requests that she had made on November 9th. And I had kind of broken tradition or protocol, kind of responded to her saying that I was under the impression that we had reached out to them about meetings and getting, and that those were kind of, that it was in her court. I believe that we, I made a mistake in the comment that I made that night, and there may have been a misunderstanding of that, whether outreach had happened about that particular request that was made on November 9th. So I did want to acknowledge that here, we are in discussions with Erin and the WEA about meeting. And so things are kind of well underway coming out of last, the last meeting. And we're, we're working on getting the meetings that, that she requested scheduled. So I did want to report back on that. Um, and with that, I think that's all for me. So Superintendent Lyons, I'm going to hand this over to you.
Thank you, Susie. I'd like to thank Maggie for, for kicking us off this evening. For my comments and updates under section A, it is my pleasure to introduce Ian, Avery, and Brian Schmidt to share a little bit about what's happening at Walton. Thank you so much for coming tonight. It's much appreciated.
You're welcome. Thank you for having us. It's great to be here. So I'll just, I'll just kind of introduce what we'd like to talk about, and then I'll hand it off to Ian and Avery. So I'm Brian Schmidt. As you know, I'm the principal at Walton, and last year, we had kind of a special thing happen in one of our third grade classrooms. Our third grade teacher, Ally McHenry, had some students approach her and ask if they could start a school newspaper. And what we wanted to do tonight was just bring a couple of representatives from that newspaper. It's called the Walton Wonder. And Avery and Ian are, are current writers and also co-founders of the Walton Wonder. And they're going to share a little bit about their work with Ms. McHenry and what they've been doing over the past year or so, and also where they hope the, the newspaper goes in the future. So without further ado, Ian, you can take it away and, and get us started.
Hi, I'm Ian Lasker. Well, first thing, thank you so much for inviting us here. Me and Avery, we're just so happy we're even here right now. It's so amazing. I can't hold it in. Okay. So first, how we came up with it was there's this comic series that I really like. I, I, I think it's called Big Nate. It's a really funny comic series. And well, there, my friend behind me, Lincoln, I told it to him and he was like, wow, that's a really great idea. Where'd you come up with that? Then I told him I got it from the book. And then this other person in our class, Haley, we knew that she was good at like sorting out stuff. So we told it to her, and then we told her how we got it and what just happened. So then we told it to our teacher, Ms. McHenry, and she was like, wow, that's a great idea. And then we just started it as a normal morning routine where we would work on it digitally. And it really had started.
So recently this year, mainly at the start of the year, Ms. McHenry brought up the idea of starting up the newspaper again because I think most of us felt like we have lot, we had lost the idea over the summer because, you know, summer is fun. Um, so she's all sent us a form if we want to sign up for the Walton Wonder. We had to put like why we would want to be in it and certain details about herself. And she accepted us. So we work Monday, Wednesday, Friday from 7:30 to 8:30. Um, and after she sent out that form, I feel like everything, I think me and Ian and most of the workers felt like everything got a little more professional, sort of. Um, for example, in third grade, we would only do it for morning, morning work. Um, but now we come in to school an hour early, hour thirty minutes early to work on it. So usually Monday is a planning day. Everybody gets their names on certain sections that they want to do. Wednesday is just a writing day and an interviewing day. So, and then lastly, on Friday, that's usually a publishing day where we publish the newspaper on real paper and we pass it out to everyone.
Okay, so one of the sections in it is comics, and I mean, it's a newspaper if it doesn't have comics. And I like to write the comic section because I love drawing and it's fun to come up with ideas and fun, creative ways to have fun and put them in the newspaper. And some of the comics I make talk about real, actual stories that happened to me. Some of them are funny, some of them I just want to write down and make comics about. And then actually, a few months ago, or I don't really know, um, we came up with the idea, I think it was like a fun Friday, to do a comic contest. And there were over thirty entries, and there's a winner for each grade. So that was pretty fun.
Um, so a section that I write once every two weeks is called Town News. So it first started out as cool places in Wakefield. And then it was just sort of restaurant reviews. And then it kept being restaurant reviews. They just changed the name to Town News. And I looked over and I said, why is this named Town News if I'm not actually talking about things that happened in the town? So I started to think about, started, started to write about things that have actually happened. So like maybe weather, like I talked about the first actual snow we had, and maybe how it affected some of the people. That big rain we had that one week. And I talked about just little things. Um, like near Christmas, when the lights were hung up all over the trees in the park. I wrote about that and how you should go visit it because it looks very pretty at night. Um, so yeah. So our goals, some of our goals for the newspaper are we really want to keep writing the newspaper and sending more issues out, and we want to keep making it entertaining for our readers, because most of our readers are kids. And we also want to get a newsstand. So what, while we're doing it right now is we're just passing them out at lunch, so not everybody gets one. We want to get a newsstand so that if somebody like loses one or misplaces one, they can get one whenever they want.
Okay, so we've also trying to work on the comic section and make it more fun. So we're trying to expand it and add like crossword puzzles, jumbles, and stuff like that. And so far, we've had eleven issues of the newspaper. I, I can't remember when we started. I think it was like October or something. And our goal is to get to twenty issues. So I think that's nine more issues. So that would be a great accomplishment to just have.
Awesome. Thank you so much, Ian and Avery. Well done. So that's our, that's our highlight from Walton. Thank you so much, school committee, for the opportunity to come on and just share a little bit. And I also just wanted to give a, a thank you and a shout out to Ms. McHenry for leading this awesome work. You know, this is really, you know, a really special thing that she made happen. So thank you, Ally McHenry, and also to our, our other twenty-two Walton Wonder writers. Thank you for being a part of this and for your hard work. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, Brian. Ian and Avery, thank you so much. Ian, you're the author of Dr. Abhorrent? Is that right?
Yeah. Look at you, Ian, getting famous.
Yeah, and, and we're looking at around town. We love, actually, this is like a highlight of our week to get your newspaper at central office. Yeah, it's a big deal, Avery. We're very happy to get it. Yeah. So we want to thank you guys so much for, for coming on and sharing what you're doing. It's really, really appreciated. And we're really looking forward to, to continuing to kind of read your work and what you're writing about, both in your comics and around the town. So thank you so much. We really appreciate it. And a special thanks to Ally McHenry. You know, Ally's a teacher, I think, without limits. You know, Walton is a pretty special place. And, and Ally is, is just really just all about the students, and it's just, it's undeniable in regard to the newspaper and when you see what they produce. So it's, it's really quite great to see. So thank you again. Much appreciated. I'd like to shift to my next item on the agenda just to give an update in regard to, to COVID, which seems like, seems like a little hard shift, but but it's a nice way to start with students to kind of align what we're doing and the reason that we're actually here doing this work. Ryan, can you put up our slides?
Just one moment.
Thank you so much. I just, just a very quick update in regard to just COVID and where we are this week. Joining us this evening is Anthony Choi, the director of the Board of Health for Wakefield and Melrose. Anthony has been straight out almost every day. In fact, I know we had competing meetings this evening, so he's just going to be with us for just a little while. Number of cases this week is, is down compared to where it was last week. So the trend that we're seeing across the state around, you know, the, the effects of the Omicron variant and the numbers trending downward are the same here in Wakefield. Two weeks ago, we had almost three hundred cases. This past week, we had two hundred cases. And it looks like we're heading in, as of today, we had about eighty-six cases. And so numbers are trending down, which we feel good about. We're also looking at new information that's coming out from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. Next slide, please. Just so, just some goals around, just some things we're going to talk about tonight. The new information coming out from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Ed really continues to focus on keeping teaching and learning going and keeping schools open in a safe manner, right? The goal of this opportunity in the program that's being presented from the department currently is to increase options and opportunities for students, faculty, and staff to test weekly, right? We've read in the newspaper that testing has become a significant part of our safety and mitigation strategies, but it has been, become increasingly difficult to get a test, and that is a PCR test or an antigen test. Most test sites, the waits are long for PCR tests. And most drugstores, when you go in, you'll usually see a sign on the, on the door or by the register that says, you know, all of our antigen tests are sold out. And so this is a unique opportunity that there, the state is offering for us or to all school districts that have participated in test and stay and symptomatic testing. We're also going to, just in, in regard to this new opportunity, we're also going to continue, our nurses are going to continue to communicate with families and students, and we will report weekly positive cases to the Wakefield Public School community. So those are the goals of, of the new program that has been pitched by the Department of Ed. Anthony, am I missing anything at this point, you think? No? Next slide, please. So the Department of Elementary and Secondary Ed earlier this week released information around test and stay. And so that information was really a hard look at, at data. And what it looks like is that students that have been designated a close contact in school and, and that are part of test and stay, and because they've been identified as a close contact and they're not vaccinated, they then test for repeated days to make sure that they test negative, so then therefore they can stay in school. What we're seeing from that program is that students test negative over ninety percent of the time. Actually, the state numbers are, are closer to ninety-eight percent. You know, this evidence is the same in other states that, that are recently cited in the CDC or by the CDC that indicates the transmission rates in school and secondary transmission rates for, for close contacts is really below two percent. It's around 1.5%. So, so really what that indicates is that kids are not, by and large in school, they're very safe. We're not saying that the transmission of the virus hasn't happened in school. What we are saying is that it looks like, based on the data, that it happens very infrequently. So by, with spending all of the time and our nurses focusing on testing students that are part of this program, we're really spending a lot of resources and a lot of man-hours to test students that are close contacts and they're not vaccinated, to keep them in school, when the reality is that just based on the data, they're not, they're not projecting, they're not, it's not translating into positive cases. So, so because of that, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Ed and Mass DPH are looking to prioritize symptomatic testing while also kind of layering on at-home weekly antigen testing. And those are for students, faculty, and staff that opt in. You have to opt in. This is a choice program. But what it does is it provides another layer of protection and will actually provide an antigen test to students or to families in their home for their children as another kind of preventative layer of information. If your child is home and you want to make sure that they're negative for whatever reason, if they're presenting symptoms or not, you would be able to do that. And, and part of the plan in offering those antigen tests would be to, to just add another layer where you could do testing every week as a preventative measure just to make sure that your children are in fact negative. Next slide, please. So the, the DESE program proposal is for these two columns here. So it is to continue symptomatic testing in schools. So if you remember, back in the fall, we adopted two of the three testing options that were offered by the state. We offered test and stay, symptomatic testing. We did not opt into pool testing. So we only took part in two of the three options. So this new program, as you can see in, in column one, it says symptomatic testing and/or routine pool testing. So the new proposal would be, yes, we would continue that. So it's continuing down. So they are also proposing that test and stay would be discontinued because of the high rates of, of negative tests. It's like a re-prioritization of, of efforts, right? And so we would test anyone in school that became symptomatic in school. If you're symptomatic at home, the rules still apply. We would ask you to stay at home. But if your children were in school and they became symptomatic, our nurses would test you if you opted into the program, if you were vaccinated or not. And so that's an important piece. And so, and we would also discontinue contact tracing that is kind of aligned with test and stay. Now, that's not to say that we might not contact trace if we had an outbreak in a class or a grade level that warranted investigation. And we would also, excuse me, continue to provide tests at home as well. And so that's what is being proposed by the Department of Ed. We have collaborated with, with Anthony and the Board of Health and gotten their feedback as well. Anthony, I don't know if you would like to add your perspective on this?
Yeah, so thank you, Doug. And I think, you know, everything that you've touched on so far is, you know, is very important for us to understand that essentially kind of in the bigger picture of things, we are moving into a different, a different place in this pandemic, right? And so based on these DESE guidelines, we are still, you know, putting into place a lot of the protective measures. You know, testing with the masking and with vaccination, these are just, you know, those three arms essentially that we're using to protect, you know, helping to protect our community as well as our students. And so when we're, when we're shifting the priorities of these resources, we were really trying to protect students and also, you know, utilize our nurses to the greatest extent because we are still making sure that we prioritize, you know, other school health issues that still exist, right? So one of the things we want to stress is that by no means is this, you know, by no means is this taking the, you know, the foot off the gas here in terms of combating COVID. We really are making sure that we are utilizing our resources in the best way possible.
Any questions here before we move to the next few slides? Kevin?
Yeah, but a couple of different questions. The first being, you know, I'm assuming that part of the rationale behind this is what you had cited in terms of secondary transmission being relatively low when you cited some, some national statistics. I'm assuming we may not have local, but of course I'm curious. Do we have a sense within our schools what the secondary transmission rate is based on our own internal testing?
So based on, so all of our testing that's done through CIC is recorded for the entire state. So the, the, when I said ninety-eight percent, the state percentage is ninety-eight point six that are testing negative. Right? So it is, it is consistent with the information that's being cited by the CDC for, for the California and Illinois programs. It's below two percent.
And that was the case here as well.
It was.
And we feel, great, that's great. My other question is around contact tracing because I know that there are some concerns, I think, from families that, you know, if they weren't to be aware that maybe they should be monitoring or being a little careful or maybe doing a, a practice, maybe a home type test and stay, either utilizing the tests that they're given or tests that they're able to purchase. So am I, if I'm, if I understand this correctly, if a student tests positive was in school, and is it possible that those that he or she were in contact with may not be informed?
So we would still... So we would still report, one of the things that we talked about in this in this program. Or the change, it 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 seems really important to our community, to parents in our community. That they're notified about positive cases in classes at elementary. On teams at at middle school and cases overall at high school. So as we are reporting now, we would continue to break out that information and report it weekly. Right? So we would do it at a district level, so we would continue to report. Numbers to the state on Wednesday and report numbers in the community on Friday. But the the schools would also kind of put out information the way they are right now currently. To let parents know if there was a positive case in a class.
Excellent, okay, so team teammates are being informed, classrooms are being informed. But we're just not doing the who sat next to who for how long and then specific, okay, great, that's good to know, thank you, Doug.
Certainly. Amy?
Yeah, just to jump on what Kevin had said, yeah, if you can keep that slide up, that would be great. The contact tracing, I think, is so important that I don't think that's something that should ever go away. Just for my own family, my daughter was a close contact in school. We did get notified thankfully because when she started developing symptoms, which could have been symptoms for. Everything else that happens in the world. I wouldn't have gotten her tested had I not known that she was a close contact and she did test positive. So that I think is something that's very important and just to have a weekly thing, I don't think that's enough. I think how they're handling it now, or at least how the Galvin is handling it now, where I knew she was a close contact within a few days. Once they were able to trace that, I think that's very important that we keep that going.
Yeah, so the 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 problem, Amy, is that because Omicron is is so transmissible. And kids are getting it in so many different places in so many different ways, we we don't know who the number of contacts are. But we will report in class or on team. And so likely Carrie at the middle level will continue to let you know the information that she has. But she may not have all that information. And if she doesn't, she might not be able to report it in a way that we have in the past.
Right, yeah, I think as as long as they're able to give the information out that they have, I mean, obviously if a kid tests positive somewhere else and. Nobody's notified, that's one thing, but if stuff's happening, I think it's very important to the whole, the whole thing that the families are notified. So that we can stay on top of it.
Yeah. Other questions?
Doug, if you don't mind, I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna jump in and I think this is. It's, I think it's difficult necessarily to draw a direct, a direct line of comparison here. But one of the things that, you know, you touched on the Omicron. Transmissibility and by no means is their complete discontinuation of all contact tracing, right? That is by no means happening, but one of the things I wanted to stress was. One of the things we've talked into first responders about is originally we were telling them, you know, at the height of this pandemic. About every single case that we knew about, right? And we were, we were really talking, we were being in high communication about every single case and making sure that they knew. But, you know, when we got further and further along the pandemic, what we've been telling everybody is basically that, you know. If we can provide this level of information, great, but we also don't have all the information, we have all these antigen tests now. And because the increased transmissibility, what we've been really advocating for has been universal precautions, right? And so we we always stress that, you know, monitor for symptoms if there has been a close contact. But really, at this stage, we really want everybody to, you know, be familiar with the symptoms and monitor almost at all times. Because we really, like you said, are not able to pinpoint exactly where this transmission is happening. You know, there are many opportunities that may be missed, even when we do that contact tracing piece with people. So we want to make sure that everybody understands the importance of being vigilant in that sense too. We want to make sure I'm monitoring for symptoms, even when that is happening.
Suzie, I know you had your hand up.
Um, Doug, are we expecting? Parents to call and report that their kids have tested positive? Because I I would think that that still has to happen in order to know like, what is your day zero and when do you come back? And that's part of what the nurses need to spend their time on, right? Which is the understanding of when kids are out, when can they come back and how does it work? So the expectation is that parents will report that because so many people are getting their positive tests through antigen testing, not. PCR testing that gets kind of reported back to the the Board of Health. It's, it becomes really important for parents to report that back. So that we have the information to be able to then do, Amy, what you talked about, which is kind of the broad contact tracing of like. Hey, there was somebody positive in your classroom. So is that the expectation, Doug, that we're we're asking parents to kind of report back?
Absolutely, absolutely, it's, there's a feedback loop. And that's part of it, that's included in the information that we would send out. To to allow families to opt in. Part of it says that, you know, we're asking you or giving you these tests. But as a, what we're asking you in return is to just keep us informed, right? And so, you know, if we're using if a feedback loop to our schools. You know, if I, for example, have a child at Greenwood and I called Mary Doherty and said, you know, my daughter Isabel's not going to be in today. Because she tested positive with an antigen test, great, when did she test positive? This day, and then we just kind of go through the kind of the timeline and and we go from there, right?
Thank you.
And so an important part of this, and and I think Anthony alluded to this, is that, you know, we're entering a new phase. Of of kind of the virus or managing the virus, right? And it feels like this is where edgings ever so slowly. To this kind of endemic phase where we're going to need to kind of manage more broadly. And we're going to need to manage differently. And I allude to kind of a an end date on this or a date that where that the department has said, if you go with this program. Then we will revisit this on April twenty second. But we're going to know kind of week to week as we're reporting on our cases and collaborating with Anthony and reporting to the town. We're going to know where we are, because if there's an uptick in positive cases, we're still going to need to respond accordingly. Right? And so that's, that's an important piece here. Amy, I see you unmuted, do you have another question?
Yeah, Ryan, can you go back to the screen, the slide before this one, please? So I just have a question then, so if. We're saying on one hand that because of the how quickly Omicron. Trans is transmissible through people, that we can't kind of trace where it's coming from, where it's going type thing. I'm curious then how we know, you know, this information, the test negative ninety percent of the time, the school is below one point five percent. So how, how can we get that data if we're not, if we're not able to actually figure it out?
So Anthony can contribute to this, but I can tell you, so every time a student is in, every time a student is identified as a close contact. They're tested through test and stay, right? And so they're tested repeatedly. And the state, every time that the student is identified to participate, that student is identified. Every time that student is tested, that positive and negative test is recorded. So the state has hard data in terms of the exact number of tests that were administered. The number of tests that were positive and the number of tests that were negative. So that's where that information comes from.
Okay, so only, but only the cases that we know about?
Correct.
Okay. And then of those people that are in have opted into the test and stay program.
Correct. Correct, yep.
Thanks.
Certainly, Stephen?
Doug, with with all these measures, you know, if we take a step in this direction. This is just as it relates to sort of tracing the, you know, where the virus is moving more or less, you know, if it's moving and we need to react. You know, if we start seeing sort of a rise in cases, we're still going to be able to sort of track where that, where that is, I assume. And then from that place, all of our other sort of mechanisms that are in place where we might sort of quarantine a class. Or or put a class remotely or a grade or a space, those are still open to us, correct? And everything that comes with them.
Right.
Those, okay.
Go ahead, I. Our nurses are still going to be watching over our schools. Watching over our classrooms and and working with the principals to advocate in ways to keep kids safe, right? So, you know, we've had a large outbreak or a kind of a spike in a class and we've closed the class. We've had a similar spike at another elementary school and we've talked to the nurse and the nurse has said, you know what? I I have this under control, I understand that all of the students were together. I'm able to identify roughly kind of the transmission and who was contacted. Who and how this kind of was transmitted. So because of those reasons, the nurse says, I don't think we need to to close the class. And in other schools, similar circumstance and the nurses have said, I'm going to test the remaining students that are in the class. To just keep, keep them in school. And so, you know, our nurses are going to continue to make those types of good decisions. You know, this is just, from from my perspective, this broadens our testing program. And also kind of potentially frees up some some more time for the nurses. And, you know, one of our parents on the Zoom call on Thursday afternoon said, you know, Doug, this sounds like. Pool testing, but just run by parents. I said, I've never heard it described that way, but yes, okay. Right? It's another layer of of kind of mitigation. And so it's, it's a nice, it's a nice, nice thing to have from my, from our perspective. So.
I would say, you know, I've had a few interactions with with Cheryl over at the Woodville. You know, a a couple of times, because our kids have have had sort of the sniffles through the, it's the season. And it's just so obvious that that we rely on them and their expertise sort of through this. And I think we're fortunate to sort of have have them. And and whatever we can do to support them and sort of lift, you know, alleviate all of that pressure that they've been under in a more focused sense. That just makes so much sense. My, one other thing I was curious about is in terms of I had seen dates on the on the next slide. In terms of when the state is saying that they're going to roll it out, but I know that we're already past the twenty fourth. Because I assumed we're we're having this discussion and it's good that we're talking about this. So sort of if we opt to go into this program, when when would you anticipate we might start?
So if you see that on the the bullet on the right, the language on the right, the new program will start when families complete the opt-in form. And not or, but and when antigen tests are distributed. So we want to get the opt-out forms out, give people time to kind of read and process this and opt in. And and when the tests are delivered from the state, we need to get them distributed before we get this started. We think we could potentially do this in a week. Right? If we got this information out, today's Tuesday, if we got this information out. This week, we we think we could start at the end of next. Right? And and so if you go to the next slide, please, Ryan? Um, so again, I I think I've shared this, students who are symptomatic would stay home. We would continue to track positive cases, we'll continue to communicate about positive cases in schools. Right? And this will vary level to level because, you know, in middle school, you move class to class on your team. And high school, you you move kind of department to department in different classes, right? So nurses may contact trace if there are multiple cases or vulnerable people in a given class. So next slide, please, Ryan? So this is just, you've already heard from Anthony. And so, you know, we are going to revisit this, so the department has put kind of an end date on this of April twenty second. But the the plan, Stephen, would be to work, continue to work with the Board of Health. Work with our nurses and get this information out to families by the end of the week. Right? And then kind of go from there. Next slide, please. Yeah, so that's, that's where we're at, just a quick few slides here, just to kind of set the stage for this context. Amy, unmuted again.
So is that April twenty second date that is also, is that a mask update too? Or what's, is that just about this?
This is just about this.
Okay, do we have another date for that?
We do not have another date yet.
Okay.
We do not have another date yet, I'm assuming, I think it goes through February, at this point, it goes through February. So I think we'll be hearing at the end of February.
Okay.
Right? Amy?
Thank you, I have a question because I I just want to confirm something. One of the slides said contact, test and stay is a no if we go into this program, right? But then two slides later, it mentions that if the nurse feels that. Say like a classroom needs to do contact tracing, they will. So what happens to that pocket of students that aren't in the test and stay program? Do they then get sent home again?
So test and stay is would be phased out.
Right, but then on that that slide, like two slides forward, there might be contact tracing, right?
Right.
So you're still going to have students that might not be in the test and stay program.
Got it, so I I think I can answer your question if I understand, so let me, let me restate it. And you tell, please tell me if I'm, if I got this.
Okay.
Right? So what I hear you saying is that if a nurse decides to. Work through close contacts, so they decide that these, this group of kids are close contacts, would they be tested, right? And the answer is yes, if they were not vaccinated. And 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 we, and they opted into testing, yes.
So then, but but there's still like a percentage of students who aren't in that program. And they then sent home for the five days.
They, yes, I guess they could be.
Okay.
They could be. And so I think we can include that in our scenarios and information. So let me, let me answer that question concisely and work with our nurses on that. To make sure that we nail that down, so that there's no misinformation.
Right, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
If I could just follow up to Amy Wall's thing, Amy, the DESI has that through February twenty eighth. The mask mandate for the state.
So are we good, you think? And if anyone has any other questions offline, we can certainly catch up, Anthony, I appreciate the help. So just moving forward, just to let you know, we will be collaborating with our nurses and Anthony to kind of get this information out to parents. And we will be moving on from there, so that's, that's where we are. So thank you so much for the time and for the questions, I feel like these questions. Help us, you know, kind of roll this out a little bit more effectively and address scenarios. So it's much appreciated. The next item on my agenda, Andrew, thank you for being so patient, much appreciated. And so I'm going to introduce Andrew Sidroni. I believe all of you know him, he is a counselor at the middle school. And he is also our our district leader in in that counseling space. And so he works with elementary schools, he's worked with the high school in regard to screening programs, placement. Transitioning students, he's actually been a just a tremendous help on so many levels. So Andrew is here just to talk a little bit about counseling and just to give an update in the district, Andrew?
All right, thanks, Doug, good evening, everyone. Yeah, I got a couple of good updates here going through the different levels. But, you know, first off the bat, why don't I say that, you know, it certainly has been a challenging year, right? In many ways more challenging than last year, which I think many were unanticipated. But, you know, definitely a feeling of high stress amongst students and families and faculty as well. You know, with an increased need, you know, in our in our students. So kind of, I think that's being felt kind of across the board, especially since feeling the burn of having. Outside of school counseling services being really hard to, you know, kind of secure for families, right? There's a big need for for counseling outside of school and not many numbers of counselors available. But for the most part, most kids are rebounding from last year's hybrid learning and, you know, the kind of remote learning model. Kind of at different levels and different, you give different rates. But I think, you know, as a whole, you know, the year and a half or so of kind of hybrid learning. Or kind of reliance on technology really increased kids kind of isolation a bit. And kind of ended up reducing social skills, face-to-face social skills, you know. And we're seeing a lot of, I guess, academic immaturity in kids. So again, this is all kind of playing into what the high needs we're seeing in counseling and. Mental health and student support, social emotional needs at school. But despite how challenging it is, I can assure you, there's a lot of really, really good things going on in the district, I'm going to update. Um, but despite how challenging it is, uh, I can assure you, there's a lot of really, really good things going on in the district. I'm going to update you on. Um, and believe me, um, you know, when, when former, uh, principal, uh, Adam Collantoni, uh, from Gal- Gab- Galvin. Uh, texts me about 10 to 20 times in the, in the late, late summer and early fall. Uh, you know, Andrew, how did you get the SOS grant for the schools or how do we do Elliot? Um, how do we get the relationship with Nan? What, what do you do for this? Can I get that planning doc? Um, you know, it reminds me of how well, uh, we do things in Wakefield, uh, in this space. Um, so you know, fairly confident, um, we're still, still hanging in there doing well. So I'm going to start off with some elementary school updates. Um, I spoke with the elementary school team, uh, recently, and they let me know that they ordered some more second step curriculum. Um, so I know they're, they're able to cover the large majority, I believe, um, of classrooms. At the elementary school level with the social emotional curriculum, uh, second step, which is great. Uh, there was a WEF grant, uh, to create a grief and loss lending library. For students and families, um, at each of the elementary schools. Uh, so the WEF, um, grant a lot of generous amounts, uh, to buy a collection of books on grief and loss. Um, and each book has a placard placed, uh, in dedication of our late faculty member Pam Wood and her legacy, uh, in Wakefield. Uh, even nicer, Pam's father, uh, actually donated time and made, uh, handmade bookcases for each elementary school. Um, that is going to hold the book collections in Pam's honor. So, uh, just a really nice tribute. Um, and a really fantastic resource for the district, right? The idea of a shared library. Um, in each, in each elementary school on a, a much needed topic of grief and loss, which, you know, kind of comes up in our students a lot. So. I loved hearing that update, uh, from Jenny at, uh, Greenwood. Uh, in addition, I've got a team of, uh, our, our counselors who are exploring different elementary school mental health screening tools. Uh, you know, as you may know, we do a lot at the middle and high school level and we don't currently do any screening at the elementary school level. Um, so we are looking at kind of what other districts do, if they do anything at the elementary school level. Um, we have a couple of connections, um, in the area. That we're going to reach out to and see if there is any opportunity to add a screening piece at the elementary school level. We think that would be really beneficial. So that's our elementary school update. Uh, at the Galvin, we've got a couple of things going on. Uh, one thing is we noticed that a certain percentage of kids in each grade struggled last year during hybrid learning. The kids had struggled with mood regulation, um, attendance, academic production. And it took them a little longer than, uh, typical students to get back on their feet this year. Um, so we're about halfway through the year and, uh, we're basically working on, um. A model, I guess we're calling it kind of TLC plus or TLC light. Basically working on a short-term counseling support space that would be staffed on a rotating basis by our team. Uh, we actually kind of did something like this last year in the hybrid model. Uh, we had a drop-in counseling center. Um, trying to replicate that a little bit because last year it really was successful for kids who were struggling. Um, and we're looking to again, kind of replicate that a little bit, uh, for additional space for kids who are still struggling this year. Uh, biggest news at Galvin is the addition of Dory Blyden, who is our fourth, uh, Gen Ed counselor at Galvin, which is fantastic. Um, you know, it was really, uh, a huge ad by Doug this year, giving us the availability to have four counselors for four grades at Galvin. Uh, can't speak enough, uh, about how beneficial it's been, how helpful it's been. Uh, it's just fantastic. Um, although we lost iCare last year, because we did that during the hybrid model. Uh, we are still working on kind of standalone iCare lessons. That can be delivered during team time or advisory. So for example, I know Jen Hart has been working on, like on friendship for fifth grade, right? So should we basically let all the fifth grade teams know that she has a standalone iCare lesson? And the team would say, oh, actually, you know what? We're struggling with friendship on our team this month. Uh, why don't you come in? So she would come in and do a standalone lesson. Um, so that's something we're working on. Uh, Bonnie Warren, seventh grade counselor and myself, um, are piloting, uh, something called iCare Restorative Justice. Uh, God, going back pre-pandemic, Kara, we had that five-part series where we could do, uh, action research, right? Professional development. And a handful of the Galvin staff did, uh, restorative justice. We researched it and looked into it. We always wanted to roll something out. So. We've been talking a lot about, uh, if a student, uh, kind of engages in what we would call an iCare. Infraction, right? So anything, um, any insult of language, um, that was above and beyond normal middle school, uh, banter, right? You know, something, anything that was a little more egregious. You know, uh, you would then engage this kind of restorative justice team where we could do things like interviews. Or, uh, with other staff members in the building about what happened, uh, potentially some. Uh, paying back to the community in terms of community service in the building, uh, things like that. So we're. Again, just looking for opportunities to try this out, see how it goes. Uh, again, looking for more meaningful consequences as opposed to traditional punitive consequences, uh, to behavior. Uh, advisory has returned this year, uh, to Galvin, which was, you know, off last year doing the hybrid, uh, model, but that's something we do. To increase trusted adult relationship building in the building. Uh, and lastly, uh, Jen Hart has been working on, um. Getting some grant funds to support our ELL students, um, you know, in terms of having translators. Uh, you know, we've noticed that our ELL population would, uh, sometimes benefit from some social emotional support and counseling. And, uh, we struggle a lot in that area because of the, um, language barrier. So we're, Jen was looking into, uh, figuring out how we can, uh, you know, kind of get some interpreter help and some translation services. Uh, through a grant and, um, and work on that area. Our Galvin update there. Um, up at the high school, uh, again, another huge bonus this year, big ad is Andrea Keough. Uh, school adjustment counselor who joined Suzanne Burns. Um, again, with much needed support at the high school for our social emotional, uh, challenges up there. Uh, Andrea's fantastic. And again, just a huge, huge ad. Um, God, I think I talked to Mike Boudreau, uh, about a week, uh, earlier in the week, um, at the, uh, subcommittee meeting. And he had said, you know, Andrew, what are your? Your biggest needs on the, on the department? And I told him that a year ago, I would have said staffing was, was tough. You know, just because, um, you know, I mean, realistically, we never have enough, but. Um, these two ads of Dory Blyden at the middle school and Andrea Keough at the high school have been fantastic, huge ads. Um, so Andrea, uh, along with Suzanne Burns and Victor and Rebecca, the school psychs. Um, have really done an incredible job at rolling out specialized group counseling groups. Um, I've been so impressed. I'm jealous. I want to start trying it at Galvin. Uh, I think we could probably replicate it in the upper house. Lower house might be a little harder, but, um, it is, they basically market them, they market these groups in health class. And they do some informal surveys, some casual surveys to look for need. And so right now, current groups going on at the high school are stress management and balance. Victor runs that one. Uh, post-high school planning and college career readiness. Uh, healthy habits to thrive. Uh, worried warriors, it's an anxiety group. I like that one, like the title. Uh, Mrs. Burns also runs, uh, healthy alternatives to substance use. Um, and I think Andrea runs a self-esteem building group. Um, again, all fantastic. They said, um, they get a huge buy-in and a huge participation rate because it is voluntary. So they market these groups and kids sign up. So right off the bat, you know, these kids aren't invested. Interested and there's big buy-in to the group topic. Um, so they've said they've been very successful so far. A couple tentatively planned for the spring is, uh, a FISH group, which is families in separate homes. So divorced families, families going through separation. Uh, goal setting and planning, uh, an LGBTQ, uh, plus support group. Uh, people, people of color and allies support group. Um, and that is it. So those are the ones they're working on for the spring. And up at the high school as well, just an update in regard, in regards to the substance use diversion program. Suzanne Burns and myself work along with Catherine Dengra, um, uh, at DPH. In terms of our, uh, diversion, uh, program. So for students caught with substance, um. Uh, up at the high school, we offer them, uh, again, a non-punitive response or a less punitive response. Of participating in a class with myself and a couple of sessions with Suzanne, uh, essay writing prompt, things like that. And Catherine, um, was, God, fantastic enough to bring I Decide to the district. So I Decide was grant-funded. Uh, evidence-based drug education curriculum that is by Harvard University and Mass General. And, uh, along with, uh, the high school assistant principals, Suzanne and myself will all be trained. Um, in I Decide. Somewhat, uh, soon, probably in the spring sometime. We're still waiting to get a data confirmation due to a bunch of districts signed up. And they were kind of pulling from a hat when they were doing the training. Um, but it's really, uh, looks like an incredible, incredible program. We've met with them, uh, the researchers from Harvard and MGH a couple of times. And it looks like it's going to be an incredible supplement, uh, to what we're already doing. They were actually pretty impressed with our diversion program as it was, uh, because a lot of schools don't have something like that, but. Um, their overarching curriculum and model and support's got a referral system built in. So after kids, there's a follow-through, it kind of expands. So after kids go through the diversion program, there's an automatic referral service. To outside substance use counseling, optional of course, but fantastic stuff. So really excited about that. Um, and that is it for the high school. And just overall district thing. So we are, uh, doing expert screening, right? Substance use screening in grade seven and eight this spring. So. A counseling team is usually coordinating with the nursing department. They usually head that up. Uh, the signs of suicide SOS, uh, suicide depression inventory will be given this year in grades eight and 10. Uh, late March, early April. Um, you may remember, we've given it three times at Galvin, uh, and we plan to pilot it at the high school in grade 10. The year COVID hit in 2020, who didn't get a chance to do that. So this will be the first year in grade 10. Um, in our, I believe our third year at Galvin. And for both of those sessions, we coordinate with the NAN project and we have NAN project mentors come up. And speak to the students before they give their, their screening results and go through the curriculum and they help support us on that day, which is fantastic. Um, I meet with the district counselors and school psychs regularly for a kind of a PLC job alike. Um, just recently, we had Tracy Ascalillo, uh, our town recovery coach present to our team as a resource. We also had a representative from Nagley, the North Shore Alliance of Gay Lesbian Youth, come and present to our team as well. Um, we're trying to push a lot of group, uh, like family groups. Um, and group resources because individual counselors are hard to find these days. We're kind of really pushing out, you know, there are substance use groups for families. Uh, NAMI has a mental health support group for families. Um, again, Nagley has support groups for families. So. It might be a, uh, more successful option, I guess, to get support as opposed to the, the one-on-one counseling that's, uh, lacking unfortunately right now. Um, one of the bigger exciting things Doug and I have talked about, actually, we're going to, uh, roll out, we mentioned, uh, SBBH recently. Is that Jen Hart and I are going to start a weekly Zoom. Haven't really titled it yet. Counselor Talk, Coffee Talk. I don't know. Coffee with a counselor. We're up, still taking, uh. Please submit your, uh, titles, I guess, uh, to me. Um, but so we, something Jen and I did a while back. Um, and we always like to offer it before the screenings are coming up in case families, members have any questions about the expert screening or the SOS screening. Um, but then this year, you know, we had such a good time doing it a couple of years back and we had talked to Doug about kind of doing it on a more regular basis. Uh, we are going to start offering it kind of weekly. Um, probably going to be something like a, you know, Thursday, one to two, something like that. Maybe we can, uh, tweak the times a bit. And, um, again, early on, it's going to be Jen Hart and I, but I think our plan is to eventually get to a place where. For example, the first Tuesday of the month is elementary staff. The second Tuesday of the month is middle, the third Tuesday of the month is high school. So then as a parent, you know, at least once a month. You can reach out and, uh, get your level, you know, elementary, middle or high schools, uh, student support team, right? You can get either a school counselor or a school psych, um, just to bounce questions off, right? Q and A, what's going on? Um, is this, is this normal? Should I be concerned about this? Where do I go for that type of thing? Um, and, uh, you know, I've really enjoyed kind of feeling a lot of those questions in the past. So. That's something we're going to get up off the ground pretty soon. And I believe. That is about it. The other thing we'll do is, you know, we're always working on streamlining transition services, right? Four to five and, uh, eight to nine. Um, and, you know, I think we've been getting better and better every year in it, uh, but we can continue. To get better. We want to make sure, you know, no kids have a, a hiccup at those transition ages, especially around special ed or 504 services. Things like that. And, uh, you know, lastly, I think we are. Hopefully, fingers crossed, getting excited, excited to add some more field trip opportunities back. I know I am a huge fan of the, uh, Washington DC trip for the eighth graders. Um, I really enjoy that. And. I think that is slated to, to happen. And, um, you know, I think those types of things are, um. You know, what are kind of lacking right now with some of our students that they're struggling is that face-to-face connectedness. Um, normalcy, right? School dances, things like that. And I know, you know, I, I obviously was here for the COVID, the COVID talk. So I know it's certainly still. Very challenging, but, um, you know, I think, uh, we're, we're getting there. We're getting there. Uh, but that is about it. That is all I have got, although I, and I went on for a while. Uh, so anybody have any questions, comments? Um, about anything? All right. Excellent.
Andrew, can I jump on it?
Yeah.
Well, one more thing, because I know, I know, we've been, uh. We worked at the beginning of the year to bring Lynn Lyons in for staff.
Oh, yes.
She's been, um, you know, working for Pete, um, with some of our staff in, um, different groups throughout the year. But we just secured her for Parent University, Parent University on March 3rd. Um, at 7:00 PM. So we're really excited about that. Um, we're going to, we're still in the process of doing the overall promotion for Parent University, but, um. We're really excited about that. And Andrew, I don't even know if you knew that yet.
Yes, no, I did. That's fantastic. And, and I will say, you know, the way Kara had set it up this year was that Lynn Lyons spoke in the fall, right? And then she was coming back little by little with different groups and pockets of staff in the district. Right? She's working with special educators. She was working with counselors from the school sites, things like that. And it's been fantastic because Kara, I swear, I literally met with the department recently. And I, I swear, two, three occasions, people have been talking about in practice, whatever. And they said, well, that's what Lynn Lyons said to do. So this is what, so. It literally, people have been quoting. Like different things of suggestions from Lynn Lyons PDs and suggestions. So literally direct evidence of, of people really enjoying her, uh, guidance and support, um, you know, multiple times, multiple times. So that's been.
Hey, my friend, the great, great, uh, same great feedback. And it's just nice to tie it all together and, um, bring it back to the parent group as well. So we're excited about. So I just want everyone to hold the date. We'll have more promotion there on that.
Absolutely. Yeah, no, in Parent University, you know, I'm sure, I, you know, our department will, uh, hopefully add a lot of different, uh, offerings. You know, I'm sure I'll jump in with something and, and you know, where we pull others into it as well. So.
Just real quick, I don't, I don't have a question per se, but just really just a comment and did a great presentation. It was really great to hear about all the, the different initiatives that are being enacted, uh, particularly some of the group stuff. Um, that's so successful. And I know supervising a, a college counseling center, um, at, at that level, just the demand for services has just increased exponentially. And I know that that's certainly the case, K-12. And the work that you and, and all those. That are working in that area for our schools that are doing is just admirable and deserves some recognition. So I'm really glad to have had the opportunity to hear some of these things that are happening and for the community. To hear some of the things that are happening and how hard that all of you are working and just to know how grateful. That we are for the work that you're doing to support our students, um, outside of the classroom so that they can be successful inside the classroom. So great presentation. I really appreciate. Um, hearing about all the things going on.
Awesome. Thank you, Kevin. I appreciate it. And you know, it's, you make a good point as well. We always, one of the other things we always end with is that. We've always got to remind, uh, the, the community, you know, what we're doing and that we're still here. Cause I think. A lot of times people always say, oh yeah, I know the school counselors, whatever, but then something happens, right? A crisis hits or something, and then you're, you're focused and you kind of forget, oh, these people are available. Um, so, you know, we always are wanting to continue to market the student support website. And we're always looking at new ways to push it out there. And I actually reminded myself recently, I've got an email. Kind of all the principals to kind of continue to put that in the, um, you know, the newsletters and all the updates and all those things. We really want to really blanket things. Because, uh, you know, we really want to make sure families remember that we're there. Um, that's one of the, the goals of that little weekly coffee or. Chat with a counselor that we're going to try to accomplish.
Yeah, Andrew, I was going to kind of pile on what, what Kevin was saying. It was great to just get a, a comprehensive update from you. There's clearly just a lot going on. Um, and you guys are doing a lot of interesting things. Um, and to your, the point you just made, I think it's really important for parents to realize. That you are a resource and if they have a child that's struggling, who might not seek out your, the services that you're talking about. They still can get in touch with you and try to figure out a strategy to leverage that, right? And, and sometimes you just need as a parent to strategize, like, how can I help my kid? Um, and I think you guys have lots and lots of different ways that you can help children and students. Um, but sometimes you just need, uh, as a parent, especially like you were saying, where it feels almost impossible to get support when you need it. Because the, the demand is just so high to know that they could give you guys a call. And strategize and have a meeting and, and then figure out how to engage your student. Um, I think is a huge resource that parents need to understand exists. Um, because I'm not sure that they do. Um, and, and I do think the, the, um, I remember you guys coming and speaking to us last year about the. And, and I do think the, the, I remember you guys coming and speaking to us last year about the, you know, I think Susan Burns came, I think along with you potentially to a meeting where she talked about all of those group sessions that, that they were starting to roll out. And I can remember commenting and thinking, God, that makes so much sense because now you can kind of scale, because like one-to-one counseling just does not scale at all. But like one-to-many counseling really can. And it was great to hear you kind of talk about some of the topics that you guys are gonna explore at the high school. And, and then the last comment I would just make is those eye care lessons that you talked about at the Galvin. Just seemed like what an interesting kind of concept. And I know it probably doesn't, it really probably just works well at the middle school where you have these topics where you can pull in when you've got kind of drama or, or, you know, needs going on in, in the classroom. Where you, you know, it, it may be on one team, but not another, but you have this kind of box of, of things that you, you know, are choices that you can choose, hey, I really need this right now. So I, I love that concept. I think you guys are doing really great kind of creative work in support of our students and it, it was great to hear about it tonight. Our kids certainly need it.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
I just, I wanted also say, Andrew, I really appreciated your, to talk about sort of having the weekly sessions and being available to the parents and and sort of Cara bringing in that, you know, Lynn Lyons is gonna be at the, the Parent University. It just seems like you all are working really hard on sort of closing the loop on that sort of parent-student educator partnership that needs to exist. And I just wanted to say how much I appreciate that. Because I know that that's, that's really important, you know, sort of for us and for, you know, others in the community to feel that they're being heard and that we're working together to sort of help our students as a team. And so just really appreciate all the work that, that, that the group is putting into that.
Excellent. Thank you so much. You know, and you guys always a good point. A lot of us, I have, we love having parents call just for a consult. You know, sometimes parents, I think they have, they think that they have to reach out to the school, there has to be something wrong or there's a problem or there's an issue, right? With another peer or a teacher or whatever. But some of my favorite conversations are when a parent just calls and says, hey, this is going on. What do you think? What should I do? Maybe I don't even end up talking to their student. Maybe they just need some advice. They just want to chat with the counselor about something with a student, right? Is this normal? Do you see this going on? What's your advice? And that's kind of the root of the talk with a counselor, right? Because, you know, we're available just for, you know, consultations with, with parents as well. And that can be helpful.
Andrew, thank you so much. It's much appreciated. We would like to invite you back already for our first meeting in March, Andrew.
All right.
So we'd like to have maybe yourself, Jen come back and maybe Catherine Dinger as well. And so we can talk more about the agenda and looking forward to hearing more about the coffee talks.
All right. Sounds good. Thanks, everyone.
So much. Thank you.
So I, before I move on to the next topic, I would just like to make two points. One is, you know, a lot of the work that Andrew has discussed has been many years in the making. You know, the screening work that is now in place. You know, a lot of that work started off, you know, by word of mouth, by, by a pilot, through a grant. You know, and we've tried, you know, things small and we've grown them. You know, Andrew has had a good idea. He shared it with David Robinson at the high school and it has grown. You know, Jenny Beardsley, it has an idea at the elementary level. She shares it with another counselor and it, and it grows, right? And, and so he really does a nice job. You know, just kind of summarizing a, a lot of what's happening. You know, you don't realize, we don't talk about our counseling services on scale, like we talk about some other things. And, and I think we need to because it's one of the very best things we do in the district. The other piece that I will say, that I think is important to note. And that if any parents or any school committee members are interested in talking more about this, we can. But it's just this, this kind of time that we're in. Mental health is, has been, it's been dramatically increased, mental health needs of students and adults. And so one of the things that Andrew didn't tell you is that, you know, our counselors are supporting students, but they're also supporting their colleagues. They're, they do actually remarkable support, you know, in a lot of formal and informal ways for one another. And so, but in regard to mental health needs, it's also very hard for students and families to talk about mental health struggles. Because it's, you know, it, there's not always an easy entry point. And it's, it's often, you know, information that people personalize and, and kind of hold very close and keep it private. You know, if, if anyone watching tonight, or if anyone would like to have a conversation offline about how we might be able to support them or direct them to, to get help or to start a conversation with a counselor that could lead to additional help or support, we would urge you to reach out. Okay? And so we had, we had a meeting about a week ago and, and Donna Kosick the director for Elliot Health, Elliot Trauma Center here in Wakefield, also joined us and she's working with Catherine Dinger. And talking with Anthony Choi from the Board of Health about different ways to increase counseling services outside of school. And so more to follow on that as well, but very, very proud of our counselors. They're doing a great job. I'd like to move on the agenda. At this point, I'd like to turn it over to Christine Bufagni to talk about the, the budget timeline.
Good evening, everyone. Ryan, I shared with you the budget timeline and I think was shared about two weeks ago with the full committee. Thanks, Ryan. So the budget timeline, this is, this is a document that I've used for the past couple of years. It just sort of outlines the school develop, the school budget process. And how it starts in December, it starts with giving packets to principals. And I'm just sort of gonna give you a, a quick review of where we are in the timeline. So.
Christine, I think Doug wants to say something, but I'm not sure.
Yeah, I was just gonna ask if we can make the budget schedule larger. I feel like it's an eye test and I have glasses on already.
So Ryan, we can just show page two with the timeline. If you could just zoom in on that, I don't.
May have to just give me a moment to adjust that.
So I'll just, I'll sort of give you an overview of where we're, we're in the, well, it's actually the end of January. And we've already met as a team, Doug and I, Cara and Rose, with the, all of the principals and department heads. We've met twice. We've gone over priorities. We're, we're coming up with a list of requests. The, the list is quite large at this point. And so we're kind of putting all that together. What we're, what's happening this week and next week is staff forums. It's actually giving every staff member in every school an opportunity to voice their, their concerns about the budgets, things that they would like to see added to this year's budget. Things that they, they've seen developed like in their schools and what they want to see us focus on. They've, they've heard us talk about ESR money and what we've done with that and realizing that COVID positions are ending and how supportive those positions have been to them. The elementary schools that we've talked to so far have been talking about the two science positions that we added to last year's budget. So that's been really helpful to hear about what that, that has meant to them and their work. So just again, I think we can see it now, Doug. It's a little bit bigger. So this is the budget timeline. We're actually at the end of January. We've had some budget proposals from principals. We've had some finance and facilities meetings. We've had one with the FinCom liaisons. We're hoping to have another one this Thursday on the 27th. And then by next Thursday or Friday, February 3rd, we'll have completed all of the staff forums. It's really, I, I know my first year here in Wakefield, that the staff forums were in person. Doug and I would, would kind of take it on the road and we would meet with the staff at the schools. But this year it's just with COVID and just with schedules, we've just, we've been doing them on Zoom, but they're very well attended. It's been quite surprising, actually. I think it's just easier for staff, like before they head out to pick up their, their own kids. They just jump on the Zoom and kind of give us their thoughts and ideas about the budget. So that's where we are. In, in February, we have some meetings with the Finance and Facility Subcommittee, again with, hopefully with the FinCom liaisons. And then by the end of the month, we actually have a budget document. It's a draft. It sort of puts all of the requests of schools together. And it's taking, you know, what we have, two years of actual budget numbers. So what we've actually spent for year 20 and 21. And then we show, we compare the budget that we're in now, 22, with the proposed budget for 23. So it's a fairly, fairly comprehensive budget document, which you'll all see and know, some nighttime reading for all of you. But it's really, it gives you a really overview of every fund, every grant, every revolving account, every local fund. Broke, broken down by school and district level budgets. And it really gives you an overview of where we spend our money. As no surprise, it's 80% staff. It's FTEs, it, it's teachers, all of our bargaining units, custodians, clerical, calf workers, those are all the FTEs. So more about the budget document by the end of February. But then in March is really where Doug and I really presented publicly. We presented to you as a school committee, we have a public hearing. We are required by law to have a public hearing. For anyone in the community who wants to come in and discuss the budget document, we will publish it both on the website and in the Wakefield item. And then we'll also bring it back to you for a vote. There'll be a lot of discussion in the month of March about what the document looks like. And then we bring it to the town. We have been scheduled on the 28th to, to talk to town council and March 31st to bring it to the full finance committee. And then it becomes part of the full town budget. So that's sort of the process, really. I mean, it's been going on since very early in December. But it, it's sort of, you know, evolves over time. It evolves from conversations from last year. It involves conversations based on bargaining units for this year and for the next two to three years. And then we also have to prioritize what we can afford for this year and for next year. So I always kind of think about, in my mind, I'm doing a budget over three years, the budget we're in and for the next two years. Does anyone have any questions? Kevin?
I'm just a real quick question. So curious about, of course, when, when you're speaking with the principals and the other leaders, talking about budget and some of what some of their requests are, is it organized like the capital requests were in terms of like, you know, these are level one requests or level two? I forget the exact terminology that they use for, for capital, but how are those presented? Or how do you make sense of? Or how does the subcommittee make sense of what those requests are?
I feel like you were on our call today because Doug kept calling it tier one, tier two and tier three. So, so I always like to push the principals to rate their requests, but they, they want all of them as tier one for obvious reasons. But, you know, everything's a priority. Because, you know, it's very important to them and to, to see their school succeed. But for some, you know, that's where the tough decisions come in because we, we know what we can afford. And we have to make a decision about what we can do this year and over to next year. But what's interesting is over the two meetings with the principals and then now talking to the staff, you hear recurring themes. You know, the, the, the principals really were listening to their staff when, before they came to us. So the staff, particularly at the Walton School, I'll give a shout out to the Walton School. Today, they, they were well orchestrated in there. They put together their list of priorities. They sent it to us ahead of time and it was really complete and well put together. And it was a real echo of what the principal had presented about two, two weeks ago. So it's really showing, you know, how the school, you know, is really talking with their instructional leadership teams. They're really putting together the plan for that school about what they, they feel what they need to succeed. You know, they know better than anybody, you know, what they need. But it's not just instruction too. We're talking about outlets and the temperature of the classrooms and, and all of that, but.
Yeah, just I really, the, the approach that I think the capital took. And then you kind of see year after year how some of the things then moved up. And I just, I like order. So I kind of like the organization that, that, that I had as well. Just recalling, you know, Andrew talking about some of the additions to the staff. And I know some staff has been funded through some of the additional monies that we have gotten. Is there anything that the local budget's gonna have to assume that we had? Were able to add through some of those other funding mechanisms?
Yeah. So that's what we're also talking about because ESR 2 is ending this year. So we had some COVID positions on there that the local budget will have to absorb if we're continuing on with those. Those were the adjustment counselors. Those were the school psychs. And we were talking about supports. We're also looking for ESR 3, which we will have for two more years after this year. So again, it is one-time money, but we're, we're using it to support the local budget. But moving forward, you know, those things have to become part of the fabric of the local budget in order to, to continue on.
Yeah, and hearing how, hearing some of the praise for them. Yeah, it's, they're, they're important position. So thank you. That's, that's all I had.
Thanks.
Actually, Christine, can I just ask, like incredibly explicitly, is it one adjustment counsel, counselor and one psych that was funded with grant money, COVID-related grant money? Or is it more than that? When we're talking specifically around student services because of what the presentation we just saw? Because I know we've used them for like COVID, COVID teachers and custodians and nurses. But on the student services side, is it one adjustment counselor and one psych?
So it was two adjustment counselors. It was one at the high school and one at the middle school. And then we reconstituted one of the school site. And then we still have a vacancy for the other school site. So it was, it was four FTEs for the ESR 2.
Thank you.
So more to come. We'll be talking from now until the end of March about the budget.
And we are gonna talk on Thursday a little bit more about kind of those March dates and kind of how they line up against our meetings. And we'll get that all figured out and we'll come back to the, to the group and let the group know when we're meeting.
Great. Thank you.
Thanks, Christine. Anybody, any last questions for Christine?
I just have a quick question as, as far as process. I remember in past years, pre-COVID, Doug and Cara would, would do a presentation to the general public. I know it was at the Galvin one year. It's actually, yeah. Is that, I didn't see that in the timeline.
We, we didn't put it in this year. We just thought that because things are so scrunched, we've done kind of a state of the schools.
Yeah, that's what it's called.
Did not do it. We did not put it in this year.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, Doug. I think, I think we're good to move on to the next item, Doug. Great. Thanks, Christine.
Thank you.
Next up is Cara, just to share a bit about the calendar.
Sure. So I had sent ahead of the meeting, the draft calendar. I don't know if we, we need to necessarily display. I think it was more so tonight just to present kind of pretty close to what, what we think is our, our, our finished draft on the calendar. We've gone through a process of, well, first of all, our, our goal was to get it in front of you earlier than we have in the past couple of years, just to make sure that we're starting this process a little bit earlier and getting it approved and confirmed earlier just for, for staff and, and families to, to be able to plan. So we started this probably, you know, I think I, I want to say end of November at this time, just really like looking ahead and mapping things out. We've included our principals, assistant principals, the WEA board, curriculum coordinators, directors, all to get eyes on things and get it as pretty close to done as we could. We went through contractual obligations, holidays, vacations, professional development. And so the two options that we put forward to you, well, the reason, I think the, the big reason we put two options forward to you is because we're, we're still having some continued discussion around the first day of school. We feel like the rest of the calendar. Um, we feel like the rest of the calendar on both options is, is pretty much exactly the same. Minus the first and last day of school. And the reason we, we kind of ran into this was. We uh, received information um, that tentative, but probably very likely to be confirmed. That there will be a um, election primary on September sixth. So um, we were thinking September sixth for our first day of school, which we really liked um. Getting students in that uh, Tuesday after Labor Day, um, because we were proposing a staff day happening before. Uh, but then we got word of the, of the tentative primary. Um, date for the election and, and we do have some worries around having a first day of school at the Galvin. And the election day happening at the same time. So we did a plan B for that. Um, kind of thinking it's probably going to happen with a first day of school. We kind of presented our next best option with the first day of school happening on September seventh. So we wanted to put it out there for the committee to consider as well, um, and just leave it open for some discussion. So tonight we were kind of thinking it would be all about just, you know, if there were any questions, things that, that you caught that you didn't think that we thought of. I can answer any questions tonight and then we just wanted to, to leave it uh, open for discussion. And for you to think about before voting, when you feel ready. Are there any questions? Yep, Stephen?
I, I'd sort of two, one, one question is, I'm just noticing, looking at the two calendars. When we shift the last day of school, um, in option A, it becomes the sixteenth of June and option B, it's the twentieth of June. If it's the twentieth, it encapsulates um, Juneteenth. I'm just curious if um, where our last day of school is, is that affecting any bargaining units? Or does that come up as a holiday for individuals that are under our employee that? Does that get counted differently if, or are they still sort of?
Oh, okay, so Juneteenth, yeah, so Juneteenth would be um, a holiday that we would, would not have school in, in college. And then the last day would be the day after. So I, I think all of our, our staff are on amount of days more so than like, is that kind of what you're saying? Like, can they not work past a certain date? No, so our, yeah, unit A, A members are on a hundred and eighty-four days and then. Um, our paraprofessionals, let's see, would be, um, I believe they're, they're at a hundred and eighty with the students, right Doug?
Okay, so it's not the same as like when I think I get X amount of holidays and I'd be like, oh, there's a holiday I don't get.
Yes, correct, yep. It's all, all built in.
Okay, so that makes sense. The, the second thing I wanted to bring up is if, um, is if we'd be open to adding um, Indigenous Peoples' Day. On the calendar, sort of along with Columbus Day. Um, if we could just, can we just add it name like next to Columbus Day?
So, I, I will definitely defer to the committee on that. I, I will say that that did come up, Stephen. Um, just in our discussions, if, if that is something we should do and um, you know, I think it's, it's a discussion point that we're open to having as well. But it did come up as a question during the process.
Suzy, I don't know if that's something we discuss now when we discuss in two weeks, assuming these are tabled.
Yeah, so.
Just think about it for two weeks?
Um, yeah, I think we would bring it up. I guess at the, at the time of the vote, maybe, I don't know, Tom, I, I'd love your opinion on this too. Would we do it in kind of two pieces, vote on the, the calendar and then vote on kind of the naming of that holiday or? Would we keep it all in one? I mean, regardless, I think we would do it at the time of the vote, I think. But Tom, do you have a thought on that?
Uh, sure, but that would be my, my, my two senses is that we would do it at the time of the vote. And make it either a, a, a separate motion of, if the committee wanted or just uh, really. Uh, really, it's not adding a holiday to the calendar. It's not changing uh, the dates of school at all. It's just uh, either renaming an existing holiday or adding, um, you know, a secondary name to it. So it doesn't impact, um, you know, days off or school days. Um, so it's probably, it's probably a two, a two vote, um, two vote thing.
Yeah, I feel like it's going to be a two, it, it'll be a two vote thing, just um. But, so we are in no rush to vote on it tonight. If we know that we're meeting on the eighth, then we can go ahead and vote it on it on the eighth, Doug and Kara?
We, we weren't necessarily thinking there would be um, a vote tonight. We just wanted to start the process to, to get discussions going. Around, um, we want to do the front end work of getting it pretty close to done and then um, just allow for some any last minute discussion. And we think if it's voted on in February, I think we both feel that that's a good amount of time for people.
Okay, I think it's, it's fine if people have any questions that they want to ask now, uh, before we kind of go off and can, and consider it. Does, do any of the committee members have questions about the option A versus option B?
Dude, just one clarifying question. I was under the impression that the, the state primaries later in the month. It, do you remember what it was that could be being held on the Tuesday, the sixth? Seems like an odd day.
I think it's being added this year, Kevin.
It, for what?
So I, I think that there's a primary that's being added earlier in, in September. And so um, that's what we've been informed. And so, uh, again, I don't have the exact information here with me, but I think we can bring it to the next meeting.
Yeah, we can just confirm that.
We do that.
Yeah, because I, I thought it was on the twentieth, was just in my head, like, you know, for governor and, you know, like. The general primary, I thought was later in the month. That's why I'm curious what would maybe be earlier.
And after a, a quick Google search, I just saw that it was September twentieth al- also. So that it would be great if it, if it ends up that that's not changing and we could figure that out prior to getting.
Yeah.
Getting together because I think, like you guys, I think the preference, well. I think some people's preference would be to start on that Tuesday, but I, I also totally understand the like chaos that that could create of. Of, of particularly for fifth graders, their, their first, you know, go around it. At arriving at the Galvin and also having voting going on would seem like, that could be a lot.
Yeah, the email we have is that there's a tentative um, date on September sixth. So I think a little time is good for all of us to maybe even get. Confirmation or just look into it a little bit.
Great, thank you.
Yeah.
Amy's got a question.
Amy, I guess I'm just first. The, the question I have is, is the reservation starting a first day of school and an election date? Because we had, we had election day today when the kids are in school. And I thought it went fine. They went in a side entrance, the fifth grade for the new students is the total opposite side of the building. Or is the question starting, the Wednesday pushes us past, you know, we, we have to, now we're at the twentieth, there's a both.
Yeah, I mean, I think it was, we, we were wondering, you know, how. I mean, I think today's election was probably a little bit less turnout than might be for this one. But I think we were, we did have the question of whether that was good practice to have an election happening. Um, same days is a first day drop off and would it be confusing for families, especially thinking about new fifth graders? But um, but yeah, I, I mean, I think it, it, that's why we're kind of just putting it out there, like it's a. It's, it's something that's come up. Um, I think we could probably make it happen. I think we have in the past. And then moving to the seventh does push that last day out after Juneteenth and kind of makes it a little bit choppy. Um, so I think we're just putting out for discussion, kind of wh- what, what we're grappling with on the first day and the impact that has.
Amy, I thought it made a, a big difference that the voting today started at eleven. Right, so it, it did not interrupt drop off in the morning and I, I can't imagine that we could control that for a primary. My guess is for a primary, it would have to be eight in the morning until eight at night.
Yeah, you're, you're spot on. You are spot on. And so, and, and Amy, in regard to your question, when you said, would it be both? I think the answer is yes. Right? I think that the scale and number of uh, people turning out for a primary would be dramatically different. Than the number of people turning out to um, for example, for what they needed to do today. You know, I think we had five hundred people or less in a, in the time that we were open today. And so um, that's, that, those numbers are really small compared to, you know, numbers that we've had at a primary.
Do, can we get the primary numbers just so, so we can compare? Because I know some parents were like, it would have been more convenient. To have the, the election today open earlier so they could drop their kids and vote and get in the car and go. I mean, six of one, half dozen the other, right?
Yeah, I'm sure um, Betsy Sharon can absolutely provide um, those numbers. Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's just a matter of everyone feeling good about wha- whatever we decide and just knowing all the information.
Tom, where are, where are we getting that September sixth date from?
We got an email from Town Hall, correct Doug? That was a email that we got from Betsy Sharon that um, she wanted to let us know. She's really good about keeping us up to date and um, she just said, wanted to let you know, just got word that there's a tentative primary on September sixth.
Okay, but we don't know what, for what though?
The email I'm looking at right now, it's just pretty, just received notice that the September primary election is tentatively scheduled for Tuesday, September sixth. And then.
I think it's governor. Right, isn't it the governor?
Would be, yes.
So we got to figure out that date, so you.
So all the more reason why Doug goes today, we're just presenting. Going to get a little more information, yeah.
And just when we've had, um, you know, we've al- always been given the. Uh, I can't think of the word I'm trying to say, but when we have the elections at the school that it's not going to interfere and that this is a whole, you know, when it's switched over to that. Um, the centralized voting, that that was one of the main concerns people had and that we were assured that. It wasn't ever going to be an issue with it. So it, to raise it now, it just, I don't know, it just. I don't know.
You mean that we might have an issue with it? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I think so, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it does impact, I mean, it impacts, um, I think we always make it work. Um, but the probably biggest impact it has is um, staff parking, lunches, uh, specialist classes like today. Um, they couldn't access the gym. So I mean, they're not um, earth-shattering things that um, we can't run the building. But they, they do um, shift things around for us and we need to plan for it.
Right, yeah. But I mean, Betsy and her staff, they do a terrific job every time and the police details, you know, every. It seems like everybody, it's all choreographed very well. The school, you know, the teachers and staff do everything they can to keep the kids safe and. Keep the two areas separate, so um, I think just things to remember when we're thinking about that, that it, it has worked in the past.
Think one of the exciting things about a new high school will be taking voting out of the middle school.
Mm-hmm.
I think we would, I think that that's what we would hope.
Right.
Right? And uh, so, but you know, I think one of the things that has been important to the town is to. Now, one of the reasons why Galvin ha- has become a, a polling place is because of ADA accessibility. Um, and to, to take it out of, it's easier to manage one site for the town and Betsy. Than it is to manage all of those satellite locations that she used to manage. You know, all around town, um, and to staff those now would be really next to impossible, all of those small locations. So, you know, I, you know, we're trying to be um, good partners, collaborators with the town. Um, it's a town, the school is a town building, um, while also trying to, you know. Uh, meet the needs of the teachers because it is an inconvenience for the teachers. Right? And so it's, 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 so we're just trying to balance those, those audiences. While also trying to understand the needs of families. If we were to have something on the first day, it doesn't, doesn't seem like to. Doesn't seem like the best way um, to get off, you know, drop children off on, on a first day with voting happening. It just seems very chaotic. Um, I just think about students transitioning and how that would affect my family. If I were dropping off my children off, I wouldn't be, my wife would be and she would be. Um, probably a little concerned. That, those are just things we're thinking about.
Sorry, one more question as far as process. When we vote. Are we just putting one on the table? Like, so we have to decide which one? Like, it's not going to be majority wins. We have to decide collectively which we're going to vote for?
I think we, I, I, I mean, I think that's a process for spoken. I think we, we just wanted to be um, as upfront as possible with. I think we can make either way work, but I think we wanted the input of the committee around which, you know, just with all the information that we have. Um, which do you feel better about? Um, we, we've had this conversation with WEA board as well. And we felt like, um, and I think the September sixty is obviously like a cleaner um, schedule. It just, you know, the, the first day in, but if, if people felt like it was outrageous to have. The first day of school on the same day as an election, okay, then plan B would be, we feel like we should start September seventh. And then everything else should, you know, trickle after that. I think we just wanted to, to bring it up, just with all the information. Um. That we had and just, and just put it out to all of you.
So I think Amy's question is around which, which one like gets.
Yes, that's why I defer to you, Suzy.
Right, so, so Tom Markham, is there such a thing at, at, or Kevin? Because you guys have been through this longer. Um, is there such a thing as like an informal like hand vote? That, that we can take to see like how, how members are feeling against two choices? To help us figure out which one we would put forward for a motion? Like, is there such a thing?
I think such a thing is, is, i- is possible, provided that obviously it's done during an open meeting and. A consensus is, is driven there. The other thing I would, would speculate is that in preparing the motion sheet. Uh, you know, Judy and Doug would not put a motion, would not put motion language. Because it wouldn't be pro forma. Uh, and then that way, anyone could make a motion, whether, that wouldn't be me as vice chair. Anyone could make a motion with whatever their calendar preference may be. Usually most of these motions that we have are sort of pro forma. Um, in that we're, you know, endorsing the superintendent's recommendation for this or that. Unless the superintendent's prepared to, to only make one recommendation. Of the audit calendar and then we would vote on, on that. So there's a, you know, a bunch of different ways to, uh, to land there. Excuse me, but I think Amy's question, we, we obviously, we have to decide, um, you know, what we like best of the. The administration's going to put forward a recommendation and in a couple of weeks, we may have more clarity around what primary is going to be.
Right.
And then, you know, that almost maybe answers the question. Uh, ma- might not, but nonetheless, it, it just might.
Yep, okay, so let's, we can tackle it at the next meeting. Hopefully we'll know more and if we don't, we can. To your point, Tom, we shouldn't put formal motion language on the sheet. It can be a, a, a bit of a more informal kind of recommendation, um, or someone can put that motion forward. Um, okay. Any remaining questions?
Yeah, I, I, I did. Um, thanks. Um, so a couple of things for, for Doug and Kara a- around, around process and. Where we are uh, today versus where we've been the last couple of years. One. Um, thank you very much for leading this discussion so much earlier in the year. Um, I think it's good, certainly going to alleviate some of the uh, frustration all around uh, with regard to calendar planning last year. Um, and even the year before, the last couple of years, while it hasn't been entirely a delay problem, it's really how the calendar felt. And there were, you know, some, i- is some issues and concerns around, around that. Where, you know, how late in the year Labor Day was, when the Jewish ho- uh, ho- holidays were and so forth. Um, so th- this sort of um, uh, you know, this year's real calendar sort of uh, alleviates some of those, but. Not entirely. But if you, Doug or Kara, could you speak to, um, what has, what has been the vetting process that got us to tonight? And uh, your sharing of that with the staff, sharing of that with WEA leadership? Can you, can you speak to the process that you've done that uh, you had your level of comfort put forward, the calendar in present format? Even with the two options?
Doug, do you want me to speak to it? Sure. Um, so uh, so this, so we initiated the, the calendar draft from um, you know, just. Myself and Doug kind of just put out there like, all right, here's some of the basic things um, that we think should happen, just to get a draft out there. And then um, we shared it with all of our principals, assistant principals, uh, directors. To, to put eyes on as well and just give us some things to be thinking about. Um, you know, so it was a lot of like small uh, group feedback leading up. And then um, most recently at our last meeting with the WA board, which I think was last week, Doug. The, um, I think it was last week. Um, we spent some time uh, with the board. It was really nice because the, um, they were able to give us their feedback ahead of time. And um, and so we worked collaboratively, um, just seeing what suggestions were and then kind of going back and forth and then we had the meeting. Um, for further discussion. And then um. From there, I know that Aaron Creesos was able to um, share that out, the two options that you saw in a summary. Communication to um, WPS all. And so um. The rest of the, the teachers had a, a chance to take a peek at the um, drafts as they were presented to you. So if that, if that helped, so it's just kind of been a lot of back and forth via, we, we did move, I don't know if you noticed the style change. We did move the calendar to Google Docs too, which has been nice. I have to credit Diana Ho. Um, the library, library media specialist at, at uh, at the high school. She's fabulous and she's helped us a lot with formatting and. Um, so, but just moving to, to Google Docs has moved um, back and forth a little bit easier too. So it's been a lot of inputs and then the email, yep.
No, I, I did, I noticed the, 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 the graphic change. No, I, I did, I noticed the, 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 the graphic change, um. It seemed, it seemed certainly easier. Um, my, my next question on this, um. Can you speak to what your, your, what the administration's plans or thinking may be granted, it's months away. But for, for opening day, I see we only got one. Staff day at the beginning of the year prior to the opening of school, whether it's September sixth or seven is not relevant to this. September one is going to be staff opening day and that's just one day. Can you speak to what your PD plan for month of September might be?
Doug, do you want me to keep going or? Um, so we just talked about this a lot, so, um, I think for the opening day, I think we all feel. Um, comfortable that we would probably um do our, you know, our opening um district wide gathering like we've done in the past and then. Um, weaving in some professional development and some building based work on that first day. Um, before students come and then we have a, uh, within November eighth election, that will be another full. Uh, professional development day that will follow, you know, even a half um day professional development that we have in September, October. So we feel like we were able, we're staggering it more than we have in the past, we felt like this, for instance, this year. With the rollout of the new math curriculum, we really felt it was important to have um two days ahead of students. Um, but contractually, um, we, we've talked about this, that it, it calls for one staff day before students come and we felt like. Just even the way other things were following, part of our conversation that, that, um, we could work with that this year. Um, so if that answers your question.
It does. Yep, and I know, I mean, because of the nature of how the calendar itself is. This year, it's far more cut and dry than. Um, than some of the, uh, you know, complications with how late in the year Labor Day was and. Uh, the, the Jewish holidays are at the end of September, not at the beginning. So that, that sort of, um, sort of relieved some of the first week of September pressures that we've. Experienced the last couple of years.
And we didn't add, we didn't add it to this, these draft, but we're, we're going to continue with the. Um, attachment to the calendar with all of the religious holidays outlined. Um, for, um, all to be aware of, um, the different religious holidays that our students, uh, may be observing. And just to monitor assignments and that sort of thing, but that we didn't include, but we'll have. Um, an attachment to the calendar with all religious holidays as well.
Great, great, because we certainly want to make sure that we mention that we specifically reference. Those and for our families and students who, who are celebrating or participating in their faith that they don't be. You know, doubled up on, on work.
Absolutely, yeah.
Great, thank you very much.
Hey Kara, I know we had a, um. A situation. In the last few months where we needed to kind of re-approve the budget, sorry, the calendar. Due to, um, conferences.
Conferences, yeah.
Is it safe to assume that?
We got right in front of that, yeah, no, mistake never to happen again.
That's kind of what I figured, um, and like a total like nitpick. Um. The Wakefield High School evening conferences show that they're scheduled on November eleventh, which is a Friday night. And it's also Veterans Day when we don't have school, so I'm thinking that that is a typo.
Yeah, that would be an error, thank you for catching that. Yeah, that shouldn't have, um. That's probably, um, I have to cross check when those are going to be, but that shouldn't be that. I'll make note of that, that's on both calendars too, right?
Um, I just happened to catch it on version B. It is not on version A, on version A, it's November fifteenth.
Okay, I see.
So we just need to switch it on, on version B.
Okay, thank you.
Amy Lehman.
Like my favorite subject, the, on the six day cycle, do we know what we're doing that with the next year? Am I too soon or?
So middle school and high school will be on the sixth day?
Still, okay.
Still, and I, and we're going to leave it and leave it as a five at elementary.
Okay. Then when we do the final version, can we just note that usually the two half days that don't have lunch, right, the day before Thanksgiving and the last day? Will we note those?
Yep.
And then if we do have snow days, will the last day still be a half day? Whenever that is.
Um, we believe that it will be, yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Certainly.
Okay, we'll plan to vote on this next meeting.
Thank you.
Thanks Kara.
All right, thank you.
Doug, you all set?
I am, thank you very much.
Um, Christine, no, is, yep, Christine's still there, um, no gifts, so we're all set on budget items? Okay, so we're going to move on to subcommittee reports. Um. The Finance and Facilities Committee, um, met last Thursday. Um, much of what we spoke about was kind of what Christine just gave her update on during the timeline. Um, we did spend some time talking about, um. Kind of the process that she goes through and the kind of the stage we are and get gathering feedback and looking at. Um, numbers and looking at salaries and looking at salary changes that staff would have based on continuing ed. Um. And then, um, we. Really just, we were talking about the timeline, the budget book, um, the documentation, um, for those of you who have never gotten the budget book. I don't have mine right here, but it is a big old binder with a whole lot of pages in it. And so, um, those will get to, we were talking that Christine does that during February vacation so that we could expect that kind of the beginning of March. Um, we did get a facilities update, um. From Tim that was quick because we kind of ran out of time, but he was, um, feeling like we weren't in pretty good shape. He was talking a little bit about, um, getting the rapid tests that were needed for, you know, the continued testing that goes on at school. Um. Kevin or Tom, are either of you prepared to talk a little bit about what happened at last Thursday's, uh, high school working group? Kevin?
Yeah, sure, yeah, I'm happy to. And then, uh, Superintendent Lyons was also a part of it, so. On Tuesday, just a couple of days before we had had our meeting, or the week before we had had our meeting and then we met last week. So they had presented a number of the different kind of concepts, um, some that were in the current site, some that were on, um. Beasley Oval and then some that were on Walsh Field, so the committee actually decided to go through those and, and decided to kind of eliminate some of those concepts. Um, I would say for the most part, most of the ones that were eliminated were those that were on Walsh Field, I think for a number of different reasons. Um, the size of the parcel, the traffic, um, different things along those lines, those probably, that wasn't the site that, that seems most reasonable. Um, we do have to move forward or we do have to present, I think they had described this, at least one renovation of the current facility. Um, so we're looking at those, um, but you know, what I would say is a lot of the concepts that particularly were those that were on Beasley. Are those I think a lot of people felt most, um, most confident in, so it was, it was a really good meeting. Um, it was very, very interesting kind of hear the back and forth, uh, between the different people. Um, and the different representatives about the different sites. The things that, that people liked or not, and the thing is not to get too. You know, bogged down the actual design, that's to come, but, but looking at some of those bigger, uh, concepts and I don't know. Superintendent Lyons, if you have anything else or other impressions.
Yeah, I think, you know, the PVC group that, that and Left Field. And SMMA, listening, there's so many smart people in the room. Um, it, it's, it's really, um, great to hear, they're really exceptionally talented. And answering all of the questions that are asked. And so they did, a, as Kevin said, go through, I want to say eleven or twelve iterations of what could be. Um, you know, from a renovated high school to a renovated addition to, and to what a new high school could look like. Um, you know, to go through all of those iterations are really part of what MSBA requires. So they require that we look at the cost of just a renovation, just to bring the building up to code. Um, they require that we look at a renovation addition, they require us to consider a model school. And then they require us to look at a new, new school, if that's the direction that we want to go as well. So, um, looking at the model school, you know, and, and what a model school is, is just really architectural plans. Of a building that has been built in another town. And so basically you save the architectural costs by building a very similar model. Um, you know, there are some things that are, that can be changed, but overall the, the plans are, are the same. Um, but what we were able to figure out in, in the meeting was that. Um, our educational plan didn't match either of the model schools that were being. Um, proposed, so those were eliminated straight away and I think we ended up with really three priorities. Um, you know, one, a renovation to bring it up to code, two, a renovation addition. Um, and then the third would, option would be to build new on Beasley. Um, and any, each option has benefits and challenges, right? Um, the challenge in doing a renovation, um, to an older building. Is, you know, you don't know all of the costs you're going to encounter when you start opening up a building of, of that age. Um, when you build new, one of the things that we had talked about in terms of building on Walsh would be, um, if we built on Walsh. Um. Or, or if we did a ren, design reno, there are additional costs, um, for each, for each plan that's made. If we reno or do a, a reno addition, we would have to, um, displace students for up to three years. And have them taught modulars, so that's, that's a tricky part and an added cost that's not reimbursable as well. And so, but overall, I think it was an exceptional meeting, it was a long meeting, but we covered a lot of ground. Um, and the architects are very, very, very thorough and very detailed. Um, and looking at all options and collecting data for all choices. I don't know if I'm missing anything, Kevin, but that's pretty, pretty close.
I think that that really captured it. The really interesting thing for knowing nothing about construction is how, you know, you just think there's a flat per square foot cost, but. It was depending on the model, those, all those numbers all fluctuated, it was really interesting kind of the, the work behind it, um, that they come up with them, but. I think really exciting, um, you know, just really looking forward to this process continuing, the next meetings this coming Thursday as well.
Tomorrow, um, we are doing a site visit with Left Field and SMMA, we are visiting, um, Belmont. Um, new high school in Belmont. We're visiting the new high school in Winchester and we're visiting the new high school in Somerville, just to get an idea. About, um, what those schools look like, what they feel like, when we, we're going to be toured. Um, around those buildings, just to get a sense of, of what they. What a new building feels like and, and be able to talk with some of the administrators there around some of the challenges.
Doug, in Winchester, was that a, um, a reno and addition, right?
I think, I believe it was.
I'm pretty sure it was, um, so I, I could imagine that one looking a lot like. What a reno and addition could look like in Wakefield, because I, I remember being in that high school and knowing kind of. They were building to the side of it and behind it and over to this side and, um, so that, that's, that's really an interesting one, where Woburn is a. I mean, it's not new anymore, really, I don't think, I feel like the, you said Woburn, right?
Did I say Woburn?
Oh, my bad, so Winchester, Belmont.
Somerville.
Somerville, okay, yeah, because I was going to say Woburn was born like, or born, built like twenty some years ago, but okay, cool. Any questions for Doug? Or, oh, go ahead, Tom.
No, I just, just wanted to, uh, uh, to highlight. You know, certainly supporting and agreeing with, with Kevin and, and Doug are saying, but an important thing to, for, I think for all of us to hear, especially. In talking and sharing with the community, is that this doesn't get, um. You know, this very important, uh, high school project doesn't get lost in the mix. We've got so much going on in the town and the world today. Um, that this really important. Project that is, uh, within, before this calendar year is over, is going to be before the taxpayers for, for, for funding. Um, we really don't want it to get lost like, oh, we didn't hear about this or no one shared with us these. You know, the, 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 the pace is being kept. Um, a, as it was presented to us. Uh, there was a little bit of slowdown a year and a half ago with COVID, but that's not. Really slowing this down at all, so the types of, you know, when Doug, and thank you for, for providing that detail, when. When, uh, Left Field met with us as a school committee, uh, last meeting. They presented, I think, as Doug said, eleven or twelve options. Well, within seventy-two hours, those options were narrowed down to four. So there wasn't a long life to those options between us hearing them and the, and the movement, so. I just, I just want to, I guess, continue to say, we really need to, if we're talking about this with our friends and, and, and fellow townspeople. Um, you know, this, this is going to keep on pace and it's going to keep going. Uh, you know, um, the, the, the project website is incredibly informative. It has all the iterations, all the projects, all the deadlines, all the benchmarks. Uh, one of the things that obviously was talked about, uh, which, um. Which isn't, isn't, you know, isn't necessarily part of tonight's, uh, presentation, because it's not firm yet, but with the pricing. Right, they had estimated project costs for those four options, starting at a, a low cost of a hundred and fifty-four million. And a high cost of like two hundred and twenty-five million. Um, and so there's still a lot of, there's still a lot of room, uh, and still a lot of, um, you know, moving parts, but it's going to move quickly. The goal is at the end of the day to get this before the MSBA, uh, in the spring and to have it before the taxpayers. In the fall, either at the November town meeting or a special town meeting. So I guess, I guess my, my add-in to. Um, do, uh, what, what Kevin and, and Doug are saying is just that. This, this project's planning is continuing on pace. And we just want to make sure that, that in the middle of all of the complications of. Of, of life and, and everything else that we're discussing, it doesn't get lost in the shuffle and all of a sudden, we think, oh, what were these guys are? You know, how do we get here? How did this happen so quickly? Um, there's a lot that's moving and it's really good progress. Um, I, I would, I'm, I'm joining Doug and the team tomorrow on the tours of the, um, of, of the, of, of the, of the model high schools. So, a, a lot of good stuff's happening. I just wanted to put that out there as a, I guess, as a, you know, out with a bit of a highlighter. Thanks.
Any other questions about the high school? Okay, uh, Tom, labor and personnel update?
Sure, uh, we met, uh, this morning actually, um, for our, uh, our, we, our meeting. Um, we, we're in the, the planning process for continuing to, uh, get ready. Or really, uh, have some, some thinking around our, excuse me, I'm sorry. Um, to get ready for, um, the meeting that we will have with the Unit A, uh, leadership. Um, that date has not been affirmed up, but we're looking at, um, a couple of dates in early, in early, uh, February. And, um, and we'll be getting, uh, conversations around some strategy for opening collective bargaining with APSME and opening collective bargaining with. Uh, the other, uh, WEA units, units B and C. Um, and certainly we will have, uh, this week's Thursday executive session is, um. Uh, a presentation from the administration and the subcommittee on exactly these matters.
Questions for Tom? Okay. Um. Just realizing, Mike Boudreaux is not here to give an update from Student Services, would either of the other members like to give an update? Nothing like putting you guys on the spot? And did you have a meeting, I guess the bigger question is, have you met since? The last meeting?
We did.
Okay.
We did, we had, um, Amy, you can help me too. We had Andrew Sidroni, um, come and meet us, which was great, so he kind of, what we heard tonight was basically a lot of what we heard the other day. Um, I'm trying to think of what else we talked about, Amy.
Rosie Galvin was on.
Oh, yep. So we kind of just learned about some, you know, pretty much what Andrew was talking about, um, with the different. Um, surveys and things like that, that are going to be going out, the different, um, he calls it marketing ideas of. Getting that out to the community so that we can have, you know, people more, people more aware of the offers that the school has for them. Um. Which is great, and I think a lot of people don't know about them, so it's nice that he was able to share that tonight too.
Yeah, it was pretty much a carbon copy of what Andrew said tonight. Um, it's always great to hear twice and then Rosie shared for like the last ten, fifteen minutes of the time we had left, Rosie shared a little bit about. Um, the meetings that were, she attended with the school principals and some of the budget, what she's hearing, the recurring theme as far as budget. Um, so we talked a little bit about, um, academic support as well as mental support.
Nice, thank you.
Those are great meetings.
Yeah, sorry to put you guys on the spot there.
That's okay. Happy to share.
Um. Any questions for Amy or Amy? All right, Kevin, um, I think we've got some policies to lay on the table, but I think you're going to give a quick update.
We do, yeah, I'd be happy to, so last week, um, the Policy and Communications Subcommittee met. Um, we have, we've been talking about over the last several. We have, we've been talking about over the last several meetings, have been really looking at a lot of policies that have come up as of late and looking at how we can maybe amend or change some of our policies, particularly looking at best practices and recommendations from MASC. Superintendent Lyons was able to work with Dorothy Presser as they're starting to work on our policies. And we really wanted to kind of fast track some in particular. And so Dorothy provided us with a number of model policies, either policies that MASC had been working on and are going to be sending out to local school committees or other policies that other districts have, that might be things that we want to consider. So last Tuesday, we really focused on what currently is called our non discrimination harassment policy. And if you were to go online and look at the at the policy book, we have policy 104R, and that's our non discrimination and harassment. Within that policy, there is a link to the grievance procedure. So one of the things that MASC is suggesting are two policies, both titled the same thing, but with different numbers. And and they're both dubbed the non discrimination policy, including harassment and retaliation. So it's kind of breaking up or it's taking our 104R and creating two policies from that by including some of that grievance procedure in it. This is a policy that according to Dorothy, MASC has been working on for quite some time. And they did it also in consultation with the Attorney General's Office. You'll see it's really thorough. It's got a lot of references, et cetera. And in her conversation with the superintendent, she encourages that both policies would 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 be passed. So what we've included in the packet today is drafts for what would replace our 104R and then a 104. So two different policies, both dubbed non discrimination policy, including harassment and retaliation. Then we'll have a motion to lay that on the table. Coming up next, just to preview our next meeting, Mr. Ingles and Superintendent Lyons are working on a social media policy. And hopefully we'll have a draft that we'll start to talk about next meeting. And we'll hopefully be continuing to lay some things on the table as we kind of make our way through some of the policies that we've all kind of highlighted as as those that we wanted to attack sooner rather than later. So without, I'm gonna, Tom, if you don't mind, I'm gonna make the motion lay on the table just because the wording is a little different than than what's in the in the book. So I'm going to move that the school committee lay on the table for two weeks consideration and vote at the next school committee meeting. Policy 104 and 104R, non discrimination policy, including harassment and retaliation as presented.
Second. Second.
Motion made in seconded discussion. Seeing none, Judy roll call.
Ms. Vere.
Yes.
Mr. Markham.
Yes.
Ms. Lehman.
Yes.
Mr. Ingles.
Yes.
Mr. Piscadlo.
Yes.
Ms. Wall.
Yes.
Okay, so we will revisit that with a plan to vote on those documents next meeting on the eighth. Okay. Future dates and agenda items. So on the agenda, it says that the next meeting is the 15th. We've already discussed earlier this evening, it is actually the eighth. I apologize for the kind of confusion and back and forth on that. Future agenda items, we're going to have a couple of things, we're going to be voting on the the calendar, we'll be voting on those policies. Doug, as Amy and Amy were just giving their updates and mentioning Rosie, I was thinking to myself, huh, it would be nice to have Rosie come give an update on special ed in general, just you know, as as someone knew it, which then led me to, huh, it would be good to hear from Meg Webb also, you know, as kind of a newer employee. So we we may want to just think about kind of where they belong on the agenda.
May is coming to the next meeting with students.
Perfect, okay. So she'll be on the two way. And then the other thing that we just need to connect on is I can't even believe we're already at a midyear evaluation. But we talked a while ago about kind of your evaluation and the process. And and so you and I can spend some time talking about kind of where we slot that in, knowing kind of the meetings that are coming up in February and March. So I just wanted to let the the full committee know that that's kind of on on my radar and and is part of what we need to be kind of talking about over the next few weeks, along with all the budget things that we need to be doing.
Yes.
Any other agenda items that that people, go ahead, Stephen?
Recently, we've been, I think Doug is on an email, I'm on an email with also Julie Smith Galvin from Town Council regarding safe streets. Nope, I'm gonna, safe routes to school. Yeah, so there's an individual Judy Crocker, who's been working with our youth council on sort of seeing how Wakefield sort of looks in that in that space. You know, what are our routes to school, how are our kids getting to school? Are these safe paths? I think they looked a lot at things around the Galvin. And so we've talked about sort of expanding that that sphere out to some of the elementaries and the high school. And especially in terms of, you know, for looking at high school building project. You know, some of the the accident that happened recently, I mean, there's clearly some work that needs to be done. So if we could maybe just carve out, I think she was mentioning maybe 15 minutes, you know, worth the time, just to give us again an overview sort of where we are, overview of the project, where we are, where we could be going. And maybe how we could work sort of more closely to to, I think, essentially, you know, get some grant opportunities to bring some money to the district to sort of soften up our our pathways for the kids.
That made me think, do we also want to reach out to the youth council to see if they have any updates to give us, even if if you don't mind kind of checking in with?
Catherine.
Catherine or, oh, my goodness. Our Ali, Ali, our liaisons, Ali and who I've been terrible of keeping in touch with about her agendas. Ali and my gosh, Jenna Farber, goodness, I was really having a hard time there. So we should just check in with the two of them to see if they, as our liaisons, encourage them to come to maybe the next meeting and see if they have a have an update that they might want to give on the the work that they're doing. So Stephen, you and I can connect on kind of who's going to reach out to them.
That'd be great.
Okay. Anything else on future agenda items? I have one more of of maybe having Brendan come in. Brendan Kent come in and give a winter sports update along with maybe a health curriculum update and and that might not, Kara, maybe that's you with Brendan, however you guys want to do that. But I I do, I don't want to lose sight of the discussion around kind of what's being taught in health related to the high school incident, related to consent, related to respect. I I don't, I know that there's work going on there, and I I just think that it would be helpful for the committee to understand and and parents to know kind of what's what's in the curriculum and kind of what's being beefed up there. So maybe it's a having Brendan come in, but we can kind of figure that out.
And can I just add in that health? Because that is something that I would like is a timeline of K through 12, like, because during COVID, some students lost a whole year of health. And I I don't think parents realized that until we came back full time this year.
Yes. Thank you, Amy. Yep. So yeah, to get, when do they have health? What are the topics that are covered, right? I think we all just need a kind of a general understanding of the health curriculum. When when kids get it, what gets covered? And what is kind of changing? Or what's being evolving? We won't be able to do all of those next meeting, but we we do have, it's good to get these all out on the table because that will help us evaluate the kind of February meetings and March meetings.
Yes, yes.
Okay. School committee comments, Stephen?
Sure. Thanks to the kids from the Walton Wonder, obviously. I mean, that, oh, my God. Yeah, Ian and Avery, right, the fantastic team coming out of there. And and to Miss McHenry, I mean, to create the space for that to happen is just, these are the successes that I can't get enough of. So kudos to them and including their their peers that that comic contest, are you kidding me? Oh, my God, and that they got so many submissions, fantastic. I would just mention the Scholarship Foundation of Wakefield is having their trivia February 5th, so you can still sign up. I think it's their 30th annual. So if you go to their website, tsfofakefield.org.
Hit mute, Stephen.
Everybody hit mute, I think it looks like, okay, go.
That was straight, well, yeah, so TSF of Wakefield trivia, good opportunity, fun fundraiser. And for a good cause, so. That's all.
Amy Wall.
Thank you. So just wanted to say a couple of things. One, the now seeing it firsthand, how the the contact tracing and the nurses and the board of health and everything, I just wanted to say. You know, I can only speak for two schools, but I'm sure it's like that at the other schools, the Galvin and the Doyle have done a fantastic job with making sure our kids are safe and that we know what to do and the steps and Catherine Dingra calling and and really, it was funny when I hung up the phone with her, she, I felt like, wow, she'd really just spent a lot of time with me and she must have 900 other calls to make, but she took the time to answer all my questions, never made me feel like I was taking up too much of her time, the same with the nurses at the school. So I just wanted to say thank you to them. And then also the students that came tonight, what a fantastic job that they did. I love that that teacher is all about teaching real world stuff, the newspaper stand. I mean, this is stuff that kids should be learning when they get out of school, you know, what's something that you can do? And really taking that initiative to to push real life stuff with them. And I think, you know, the entrepreneurship and the creativity, I think it's a really something that we should be really looking at with with a lot of stuff. So I think they did a great job with that. And that's all I have.
Great, Kevin?
Yeah, I really enjoyed the presentation from the Walton community. One of the things, and we've talked about in other venues, but not the bigger one, the one, one, many things that I think are challenging with COVID, one is that we're not in the schools like we normally would be, you not be invited to read or or, you know, to participate in an event in the school. So it's been nice, the few times we've been able to have students come here, so I'm excited to hear that next meeting will have some more. It's just a wonderful way to kind of hear some of the things that that are going on and and to see some of the extra things. There's so many of the extra things that are happening. And so it sounds like I'm missing out on some great comics and some good stories. So Superintendent Lyons, if you ever have the chance, when you get one of the Walton wonders and you scan it and can send it along, and I'd love to love to read it. So it sounds like some good stuff out there. And I think particularly nowadays, news is is so important and and becoming good consumers of news, I think, is important. Let's say that's necessarily the outcome that they're searching for, but it's it's a good way to start really young. Had an interesting experience today. I was I was away for work last night and was driving home through Connecticut. And just outside, it was more of a suburban area. There was two billboards and one was looking for subs, you know, they were looking for substitute teachers. And one was looking for personnel to teach special ed. And I thought that was really an indication of where I think education is in a lot of ways, like a lot of industries. But I think we've been lucky here, we don't necessarily hear about it as much, but I think it speaks to the the amount of work that people are putting in. And it also reminded me all the different groups that are working so hard and maybe not getting shout outs, our substitutes and other staff in all of the buildings that are working so hard, the teachers that are covering for teachers that are out and doing those sorts of things. So I I know we do it from time to time, but again, just to recognize, I think, all the hard work that's happening in some really, really difficult circumstances. You know, I don't know if the superintendent ever expected he'd be a public health expert, but hearing you talk about COVID, I mean, that's not why you got into education yet, it's something you just have to do. And I think from top to bottom, if we think hierarchical, we are side to side, as I tend to like look at it, the amount of extra that everybody's taking on from the central administration, all the way to our substitutes, bus drivers, cafeteria workers, fill in the blank, everybody. And just just to again, just how appreciative I am and seeing those billboards just reminded me. That's all, thank you.
Tom?
Thank you. Yeah, I just just really want to echo what what has been said so far. Stephen, Amy, Kevin couldn't agree with every word. You guys have said, you know, the the Walton students and staff are incredibly impressive and the outreach that they're doing, the work they're doing, the creativity and energy that's poured into this work. So I won't won't harp on all of that, but just couldn't agree with you guys more, and thank you for saying it.
Amy Lehman?
Thank you. So yes, thank you to Walton and thank you to Mr. Schmidt. He was very thankful to Miss McHenry and the students, but he's the leader in that school. And you know, the Mrs. Miss McHenry's idea wouldn't come to fruition if it wasn't for Mr. Schmidt's blessing. So it's been nice, I'm obviously biased to Walton School, but to see some of that community come back through the Walton Weekly and there's now a student council, which has been missing for a few years. And knowing that this is what kids need a lot of right now. Andrew Sidroni brought it up, too. And another thing to highlight, which came up a few times in tonight's meeting, is the parent in the school's partnership, because it is partnership, you know, the education does continue at home and and parents get the support from the schools and it's so important. And one last thing, I'm excited that Lynn Lyons is coming to Parent University. The last time she was here was pre-COVID and she sold out that Galvin auditorium and we needed an overflow room. She's knowledgeable and she's entertaining, she's actually funny. So it's really clear calendar, it's I can't suggest it enough. Thank you.
I'll just say that when I when I logged on and saw Ian Lasker getting ready to present, I know Ian's parents have known them for 20 years and Ian is a special kid. And it was really, really exciting to to see him present and get so excited about the comics. And then to to see Avery, who I swear I would have thought was in middle school and just like so poised and so confident in the way that she was speaking. It it's really impressive to see kids get excited about coming on and and presenting to us and doing creative things like the newspaper. And and like you guys all said, like, what a special thanks to the teachers and the administrators that make that happen. Because clearly they've got excited kids involved in that activity. So it was, it was great to see them tonight. I think with that, we can make a motion to end the meeting, like right on the dot at 10:00, 10 o'clock here.
Well, Yahoo. Cheers, Russ. I move the school committee adjourn its meeting right on the dot at 10:00 PM on Tuesday, January 25th, 2022.
Second.
Motion made in seconded discussion. Seeing none, Judy roll call.
Ms. Vere. Yes. Mr. Markham.
Yes.
Ms. Lehman.
Yes.
Mr. Ingles.
Yes.
Mr. Piscadlo.
Yes.
And Ms. Wall.
Yes.
And everybody, have a great night.
Good night.
Good night.
Bye, guys.